Good evening, we're going to get started, please. I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. This is the third of five public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for renewal leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1, 2016 through September 30, 2017. I will now take roll call, please respond if present. Harvey Epstein.
Present.
Stephen Flax.
Present.
Shayla Garcia.
Present.
Cecilia Hossa.
Present.
Xavier Harmon.
Present.
Helen Schaub.
Present.
Mary Seraphy.
Present.
Scott Walsh.
Present.
And Kathleen Roberts, I'm here. Let the record show that we have a quorum. The next meeting of this board will be a public hearing on June 20. In all, there will be two more public hearings to comment on the proposed guidelines. They will be held on the following dates, times, and locations. Monday, June 20, the Great Hall at Cooper Union, 7 East, 7th Street, New York, New York, from 2:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. Tuesday, June 21, at Oberia D. Dempsey Multi-Service Center Auditorium, 127 West 127th Street, New York, New York, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Directions to these hearings can be found on our website, nycrgb.org, in the About Us section, Meeting Schedule. You can sign up by calling the Rent Guidelines Board offices at (212) 669-7480. And as always, there are copies of our meeting schedule here today for you to pick up. The final vote will take place on June 27, starting at 6:30 p.m. It will be held in the Great Hall at Cooper Union, 7 East 7th Street, at the corner of 3rd Avenue in Manhattan. To board members, please note that drafts of both the hotel and apartment explanatory statements are in your folders. We request your comments on and/or suggested additions to the statements no later than the morning of June 24. Revised drafts will be sent to you via email by Wednesday, June 22, reflecting additions resulting from the public hearings. Any questions, please see Andrew. Before we begin our hearing, I would like to read some of the rules and parameters for those who are testifying before the board. Let me just take a pause here.
Is the interpreter here?
There's three of them in the back.
Okay, do we need to have them come forward and get organized?
You know what?
Do they do it simultaneously?
Oh. So you're doing it as she's ready to get?
Correct.
So you don't have to stop?
To do simultaneous.
Okay, so I'll read this next statement and then you can translate it, okay?
She's gonna do it simultaneously.
You're doing it simultaneously?
They have machines and they're hearing everything.
Fabulous, thank you very much.
Maybe we can pause to make sure everybody who needs an equipment has one.
Just make sure as you're reading, they pause.
Do you want to make an announcement to make sure people have equipment?
Please make sure if you're Spanish speaker at this time, have your equipment on so you can hear the translation going on. If I get a little bit of a jump, okay, go sit down.
Thank you.
Okay, before we begin our hearing, I would like to read some of the rules and parameters for those who are testifying before the board. Each speaker will have two minutes to give his or her testimony. In the event that large numbers of people wish to speak, the chair reserves the right
to reduce the allotted speaking time. The clock will beep once when the speaker has 30 seconds left. I will attempt to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. Speakers must confirm their presence with the RGB staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. We have Spanish interpretation available for speakers and also for members of the audience this evening. When registering to speak, please notify the staff if you would like an interpreter. I will try to call several names in advance. If your name is called, it is advisable that you move to the front of the auditorium so you'll be ready to speak right after the next speaker or the former speaker. If you have materials to distribute to the board, you should give them to the RGB staff sitting at the sign-in table near the entrance. And we ask you, please stay within your allotted time so we can get through as many speakers as possible. We have quite a few speakers this evening, and so I will warn you now that when you get to two minutes, I'm going to have to interrupt you and ask you to wind up your presentation. So with that, we can begin the speakers, and I'll read off the names of the first three speakers. James Jones, Gigi Porcelli, and Patricia Jewitt. Mr. Jones, would you step forward, please?
Corporation Counsel, New York, 100 Church. Summary to Jones, repeated false affidavit, criminal offense, four times. Reader domain of Corporation Counsel indicated this summary is their response to Sheckman Mulberry Associates Porter run to Chinese bankruptcy director. Sheckman Mulberry Porter lied, 30 tenants, vote him back. 30 independent units at this location. Fact. Senior tenants put Mulberry Sheckman Porter off property twice via 111 Senate Street Court. Charles Urle, 7A Administrator. Corporation Counsel indicated job to prosecute is district attorney. Chinese man, bankruptcy director, except Sheckman Mulberry Porter without interviewing one tenant. District Attorney policy, play dumb until there is takedown, quote unquote. And Donas Mafesas sold this location to Sheckman Mulberry Associates. Norman Segal at CCRB meeting indicated police provide bread and butter for district attorney. Police provide bread and butter for district attorney. District Attorney does not agree. Police provide bread and butter for district attorney. Jewish synagogue congregation structure abutment, Anka Hesse across the street from this location, sold to Roman Catholic Church at year 1945. Anka Hesse relocate to West End 100th Street. Sheckman Mulberry Porter show up in front of this location behind wheel. Multiple luxury automobile manufacturer addition. Keith Wright Assemblyman indicate $100 million disappear from Riverton Square Building Fund. Keith Wright indicate this building fund accessed by developer. HPD enforcement indicate alert interest in the Riverton Square location disappearance $100 million. Riverton Square, 200,000 units, space parking, 200 automobiles, 135th Street, 5th Avenue location, et cetera, et cetera. Judge at 111 Senate Street Court disagreed with Sheckman Porter owner after reviewing lease, New York State lease to apartment. Judge indicated maneuver pull is known to court as illegal lockout. $100 million disappearance is known also as pocketing.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Gigi Porcelli?
My husband has been-
Good afternoon, or evening.
Good afternoon. My husband has been on our block for over 40 years.
Could you step, or just either bring the microphone a bit closer to you or move forward? Thank you.
Okay. My husband has been on our block for over 40 years. In 2008, we took a parking lot and built a 99-unit building and received our CVO in January of 2009. Financing was our biggest issue, and it is still our biggest expense. We were first-time developers. We put our entire life on the line with personal guarantees to offer quality housing. A few people cried when they saw our beautiful apartments. We still have inspectors ask if we have any vacancy because they'd like to live in our building. Not one of our tenants wants to live in NYCHA housing. We personally care for and maintain our building as if it was in one of the best areas of New York City. Financing is still our biggest expense. As a CCNY graduate with a bachelor's in economics, I know every economics 101 student learns. The path to destroying growth in private housing is through rent regulation. When you do not pay investors and developers enough to undertake the risk and a decent way to earn a living, they go away. During the last year, HPD had evening help sessions for landlords who need financing to do necessary repairs in their buildings. Obviously, this is recognition. Rent does not always cover the cost of maintaining a building. And this financing puts the landlord's neck in a noose. Your rent increase calculations do not include financing. Last year's lack of a rent increase is an attack on landlords. It is a very clear message. Our building is for sale.
Thank you, Ms. Porcelli. Any questions for Ms. Porcelli?
I have a quick question.
Would you mind stepping back, Ms. Porcelli, for a question?
You said the building was built in 2009?
2000, we broke ground in May of 2007, and we got our first temporary CVO in January 24, 2009.
So you're subject to rent stabilization because you took some kind of tax abatement?
Yes, we took a 421A.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No. Thank you very much, Ms. Porcelli. Patricia Jewitt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board members, elected officials, press, and fellow tenants. My name is Patricia Jewitt. I have lived right here in the Bronx, 1890 Andrews Avenue, for close to 40 years. I am a working, single parent who has worked for the MTA as a cleaner for more than 30 years. God willing, I'll be 60 in September, which is supposed to be the golden years, right? At this point, I should be able to retire with peace of mind, but I can't. I can't sleep at night because I'm too worried that me and my family will be homeless. Homeless because although we live in a rent stabilized building, the landlord has gotten loans from HPD, and now they're going to restructure the rent. So even if you provide us with zero increase, we're still getting stabbed through the back door with restructuring rent. That's the new code word for moving us out, pushing us out into the street. If you ask me to pay 30% of my household income, I can't do it. I can't pay that kind of money and support my family. So I've worked 30 years, earned a right to live, but it's not going to be that way because I can't afford $1,600 a month rent. I don't care how you do the math. So you move into a building, you live there 40 years, thinking that you have a comfort, that you're under rent stabilization, and then somebody pulls the rug from you. My building suffered a four alarm fire in February. 16 families became homeless in February. They're still homeless. The landlord, RMA, has the money, but instead of helping homeless families get back into the building, they're spending the money on renovating and pushing other families out. The building suffered severe damage in the roof. When it rains outside, it rains inside on those of us who are left in there. So I'm here to tell you, think not only about rent stabilization, not only about rent freeze, but about making people accountable, because I'm paying that loan. So if I'm paying that loan, I should get ownership rights too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jewitt. The next three speakers will be Harry Ravikoff, Manuel Castro, and Rafael Rabar. Good evening, it's Mr. Ravikoff, is that correct?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I trust that you'll hear me and hear what I have to say, and try to understand the issues from my perspective. I'd like to acknowledge once again the difficult task you have ahead of you. Each year, you hear two sides of the same story. I cannot imagine how frustrating that is. I also can't understand why Albany hasn't given you a better set of tools. You need an algorithm, you need a formula, you need a small number of readily acceptable and common barometers that are used in the world today to get a formula for this guideline. Maybe hear a few people speak, figure in on a narrow range from the formula, and get this done. Bless you. It's amazing that you're here tonight, and I thank you for that. This process is archaic, just has to be said. I'm a single-family homeowner here in the Bronx. My real estate taxes have gone up about 35% in four years. I present to you my real estate taxes are artificially high because taxes on rent stabilized buildings are artificially low. Taxes on rent stabilized buildings are artificially low because there are apartments with below-market-rate rents. Those very same apartments have market-rate costs. Fuel, insurance, repairs, all market rate. If the state wants to maintain housing stock that's below-market rate, the state needs to reduce the costs associated with those units. In reducing those costs, the value of a rent stabilized building will increase, and the taxes on those buildings will also increase. Note, by the way, the tax rate would not change. Today, the system is not in balance. The taxes on rent stabilized buildings are artificially low, and the taxes on my single-family home are artificially high. So how do we correct the problem? How do we get the system back in balance? If the state wants to maintain housing stock that's below-market rate, the state should reduce the costs with those units, but you good folks aren't empowered to do that. I wish you were. The only thing you can do is set a guideline. So the only thing I can do is ask for a substantial guideline to narrow that gap between the below-market-rate and market-rate rents.
Excuse me, Mr. Ravikoff, I have to ask you to wrap it up.
Thank you. Three more sentences. Perhaps 5% and 7% are good starting points, and in the case of low rents, where 5% or 7% increase would only have a minimal effect, I ask that you implement a fixed dollar amount of $50 and $75 respectively for a one- and two-year lease. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ravikoff? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Manuel Castro? Good evening, Mr. Castro.
Good evening. My name is Manuel Castro, co-director of Voices and Action for Change. It's a community-based organization, member-led. And here, I thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on behalf of our member, myself, and perhaps more importantly, on behalf of the resident that live in the 20,000 to 32,000 rent regulated apartment in the Bronx. And according with a profile from the rent stabilized unit tenant in New York City prepared by NYU Furman Center in 2014, 82% of Bronx residents live in rent stabilized units where low-income residents. The rent burden in rent regulated apartment is at such high level that low-income residents are becoming increasingly strained in affordability. Overall, 67% of rent stabilized tenants in the Bronx pay more than 30% of their income on housing costs. Furthermore, the Furman Center's profile illustrates a lower scale, a within 44% of Bronx residents paying more than 15% of their income in rent. Generally, this is the threshold of defining severe rent burden for an individual. Various of the analysis and report prepared by the Rent Board guideline for 2015 emphatically carry overwhelming support to keep the rent freeze for one-year lease renewal and to extend it to two-year lease renewal. After all, RGB data and funding are too compelling with a growth of 3.0% on net operation income and a rental income increase of 4.8%. That stability for rent apartment for owner is secure for the next two years. Therefore, Voices and Action for Change remain firmly in favor of a rent freeze for more than 1 million household in rent regulated apartment. We must not allow New York City working class to be continually priced out of their community and pushed out of the city. Clearly, this time is around rent on the mind and contradict the two pillars of Mayor de Blasio housing policy, which are affordability-
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you, Mr. Castro, because your time is up. Thank you very much.
Can I wrap it up?
Your time is up, more than up.
No, because you're the only one to wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you said-
Can I just ask Mr. Castro a quick question?
Mr. Castro, could you step back up to the podium, please?
So what are the goals of your members, or what are you trying to achieve through the Rent Guidelines Board, your membership?
So we want to be able to live and stay in the Bronx. Myself, I'm a rent stabilized tenant since 1987, so we want to stay in the community. And we know that the continued rent increase is really a pressure to push us out, so we ask you, the board, to take that into account.
Thank you, thank you.
Rafael Rabar? Is Rafael Rabar here? No, all right. The next three speakers will be Joyce Koller, Sedell Thomas, and Wanda Bennett. Good evening.
I hope I can do this, my eyes are really bad tonight.
Yeah, please speak up, too.
My name is Joyce Campbell Koller. I'm a native board resident of Longwood Hunts Point community, where I still reside at presently. I've served on the housing land use as chairperson for 10 years, and also as a board member for about 15. Through my tenure as chair on the board, it hurts my heart to see and hear the life stories of people suffering while living in dwellings that are really in bad condition. And plus, they're unaffordable. The other thing is yet we have new buildings that are being built and have been built, and these units are also unaffordable for the folks living in the Hunts Point Longwood section. As you know, that's one of the poorest districts in the city and around this nation. So this is what is so troubling, that we have so many new buildings coming up, and yet the folks that's living in these communities and in these buildings that have been living there many for 25, 40, and 50 years, they're living in slum buildings. Meantime, they have worked hard, retired, many are veterans, and they can't afford to move into the new dwellings right across the street for them because of a lottery system, along with the unaffordableness of it. I think that it's high time that the state, the city, and all of them do something about making these, bringing down these rents and making, having the rents that's really on AMIs that really affect the neighborhood that the people are living in because it's ridiculous. I sit there, and our committee has to vote on these projects that come through, which we know our current residents will not be able to live in, and that's hurting, that's displacing people, making people homeless. I'm asking you all to please vote with a conscience, put yourself in these people's position so that we can keep a New York that's fair to all. The other thing that's really needed, I know you can't do anything about this particularly, but you need to hear it. We need project-based Section 8 buildings to be brought back and Mitchell Lama. This is how we end the homelessness population in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Koller, could you step back to the podium? We have a question for you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I just have one question. I mean, I think most of the board members would agree that project-based Section 8 we do need. There's, on both sides of the landlord and tenant, I think we're all in agreement on that. In the projects you're talking about that came in your comments about the lottery system, was there not for the Bronx Community Board preference in these projects?
There was, there is, but it's always like maybe 10 or 20 in it. And even with that preference, people still do not qualify. We're talking about Hunts Point, Longwood, where some of the lowest incomes are at, and we have a large population of disabled people and people that retire on low incomes and receiving SSI and disabilities.
But you're saying 10 units or 10 percent?
Sometime it's 10, just 10 units, depending on the size of the project. Sometime it's 20. But you have to also be chosen from a lottery, so that means that even with the set-asides preference for that community, you could be one of the families in the greatest need. It doesn't guarantee that your name will be called.
I understand the problem of the lottery. Just, you know, in Brooklyn, the lotteries are typically 50% Community Board preference. So is your landlord, is part of your efforts with your land use committee, I would hope that you would get that in future projects.
Oh, I hope so too, and I work very hard, and I work really hard with our developers. And let me tell you, a lot of them aren't happy either, because what happens, you move Bronx people to Brooklyn, Brooklyn people to the Bronx, like we're cattle. And that's, we're cattle from neighborhood to neighborhood, and this is what disrupts, it disrupts our children's education and their well-being because many of, as you know, throughout the city, we have also some of the largest amount of shelters in our system. And I work very hard. I come from out of tenants and neighbors, I come from out of mothers-on-the-move in Casa.
Thank you. Sedell Thomas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Sedell Thomas. I live on Undercliffe Avenue in the West Bronx. My home is a private house of six units owned by a company in Valley Stream. It used to be owned by a private family, a single family. I've been living in that building for 38 years, and I do want to move. It's a very well-built building, is one of three Italian townhomes. It's not that well-kept inside. Outside, it looks great. But the problem is, I'm sort of afraid to try to move because I won't be able to afford it. And I'm a retired school teacher from the city of New York. And even though I may make more money, or have made more money than some people in this room, the way I did it was, I worked year-round. I never took a sabbatical. Anyway, I found a job, I was getting a job, you know, and then when parents got sick, I was running back and forth from my native state. Now, the thing is, buildings have come up on my block. One right next door, built to the edge or to the corner, I can't see down the block anymore. So I don't walk down that way anymore. The building is blocking out about half of the windows in my apartment. The other one is that it's like three doors away from me. It is set back, but it's a shelter. We thought we were, some of us who wanted to move, thought we'd be able to move into the, one of the two new buildings. We weren't told in our community that that was going to be a shelter until the people started moving in. And we've had problems, we've had to report. You know, they sit in our bus stop, which is across the street and very convenient, but they have breakfast, lunch, and dinner at the bus stop where we usually sit and leave their remains there. I know everybody has to have a place to live. I want everybody to have a place to live, but I don't think they should be allowed to destroy where I live, where I pay rent, and even though I'm not paying real estate taxes here, I'm still taxed, and the things that-
Excuse me, Ms. Thomas, I'm sorry, your time is up. Can you wrap it up?
Okay, I'm finished.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Okay.
Wanda Bennett.
Hi, my name is Wanda Bennett, and I live in-
Good evening, Ms. Bennett.
And I live in 230 East 167th Street. I've been there 38 years. Only thing I'm complaining about is that, all right, it's like the rent goes up. I just signed my lease. I signed my lease in October, and I already have an increase. I mean, I have an increase on the lease, and then two months later, I got another increase. So I'm saying if I pay my rent, and I- So, I'm saying, if I pay my rent, and my gas, electricity, and my cable, and telephone, that's like a luxury, then what am I have left? I just retired from my job for 36 years, and I'm thinking, well, if they have a rollback on the rent, then maybe I could have something good to eat. Instead of eating a piece of chicken, I could have a whole chicken. That's all I'm complaining about.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, we have a question.
Yes.
Did the landlord indicate to you why they increased it after two months of renewal?
They said that was part of the, or what they just had, the increase for rent-controlled buildings, or something like that, but they didn't really specify it. They went up $41 after, I don't know, signed the two-year lease, two months later. So, I'm like, you know, what's going on? Then, when you call and you question it, well, we got new fixtures in the building and stuff. So, when I move, am I able to take some of them fixtures, or the windows with me? I mean, if I'm paying for it, and then plus, it'd be nice if they have the upkeep of the building. You go in the elevator, you don't even want to lean against the wall, because it's so dirty. You don't want to get your clothes dirty, or nothing like that. And then, where they have the incinerator place, I keep that clean on my floor. But they got people, they let in the building, they just come and just dump it. I mean, like, hey, you know, it's very disrespectful, and then the rent goes up, so they letting people in that don't respect where they live at.
So, it sounds maybe that you got an MCI. I just want to-
Excuse me?
It sounds like you may have got an MCI, but you can always go through HPD to verify whether or not that is the case.
Oh, okay.
And if the increase was valid. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, not HPD.
No, DHCR.
DHCR, sorry.
The next three speakers will be Julio Munoz, Maxine Zeifman, and Loleta Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Munoz.
My name is Julio Munoz. I'm a member of the South Bronx Community Congress, and I'm here to say that we're asking for a rollback of the rents. We want a rollback of the rents, because your prior, for 15 years, prior to this board here coming into creation, the landlords were getting away with 3% and 6% for a two-year lease, and they were not investing the money in the buildings that they own. Repairs were going, not done. Many of them were not even paying their taxes, and they have liens on them. So, I think it's fair for the tenants, for us to call for a rollback, a rollback of the rents, until they can prove to us that whatever money they're getting are being reinvested into the buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Maxine Zeif- Okay, well, let's see. Maxine Zeifman. Just a moment, Ms. Zeifman, we have, I think, some folks who are going to be entering the hall. Good evening, we have a hearing in progress. Could you take your seats, please? Rent control-
What?
You could probably try to start now. Or maybe not.
What do we want? Red rollback. What do we want? Now! What do we want? Red rollback. What do we want? Now! What do we want? Red rollback. What do we want? Now! What do we want? Red rollback. What do we want? Now! What do we want? Red rollback. What do we want? Now! What do we want? Fair race. What do we want? Fair race. What do we want? Now! What do we want? Red rollback. What do we want? Now! What do we want? Red rollback. What do we want? Now! What do we want? Red rollback. What do we want? Now! What do we want? Red rollback. What do we want? Now! What do we want? Red rollback. What do we want? Now! What do we want? Red rollback. What do we want? Now!
Okay, we have a speaker.
(SPEAKING SPANISH)
What?
You could probably try to start now. Or maybe not.
(SPEAKING SPANISH)
Yeah, you have to start.
What?
I would probably throw it off.
Well, I just did, I didn't do it.
I would try again.
Ms. Zeifman? Ms. Zeifman? Maxine Zeifman? Maxine Zeifman? We'd like to hear your testimony, please.
(SPEAKING SPANISH)
Put the microphone close to your mouth.
(SPEAKING SPANISH)
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Zeifman, please. Let's hear from this tenant, please. Ms. Zeifman, good evening.
Yes, I'm Maxine Zeifman. I'm a rent-stabilized tenant. We are grateful to Mayor de Blasio to have appointed a fair board, and I want to thank you, too, for that rent freeze last year. That was so important. During the time with, the 12 years, we had Bloomberg appointees, we had unrelenting high increases with wage stagnation, and we had the homeless increase. They were driven out. The working families were driven out of their homes into homeless shelters or the street. It is unbearable to think of trying to raise children under that unsupportive condition that happened with our city. It really has been unbearable. When I have heard testimony from small landlords, they have been asked what percentage of their house was rent-regulated, their property, and what was the total, and it was something like, there were only remained 2% of rent-regulated housing in eight. In my building, moderate, building moderate, there are seven rent-stabilized tenants out of 64, that makes 9%. The landlords are doing just fine. Now, and then, I have also spoken to someone who is a legal aid lawyer in housing, and there has, was not one single landlord last year that asked for a hardship allowance. So, I don't know that they're having such hardships. Some of them can't get increases because of violations that they have never repaired. And I am, the reason this city is great is because of rent regulation. We have got the academics, the scientists, the researchers, and all the other wonder contributors. We need to house our very productive middle-class and working-class-
Ms. Zeifman, I'm sorry, I have to, I have to stop you, because you're over time. Could you wrap it up, please?
Yes, it is for the welfare of this city. We need a rollback. The IPOC was negative. We need a rollback.
Thank you, Ms. Zeifman. Loleta Brown.
Good evening, my name is Loleta Brown.
Good evening. You need to put the mic closer to your mouth, thank you.
My name is Loleta Brown, and I'm a resident council member with Manani Cully. I reside at 580 Southern Boulevard in the Bronx. I've been living there for the past 17 years. I'm here today to testify how crucial it is for a rent rollback. Every day is a challenge for me to survive. I'm recently retired, and I live on a fixed income, and I can barely make ends meet. The cost of living keeps going up, but my monthly income remains the same, and each day, I struggle to survive. At the beginning of each month, I pay, I find myself fighting with the decisions if I should pay my bills, for example, my Con Edison, my medical bills, or buy groceries, or pay my rent. Each month, I pay my rent, but I find it harder and harder for me to keep up with my monthly expenses. I thank God that I can go to a pantry to supplement my groceries for the week, but it is very depressing that I have to stand in line and wait for a handout, just because my income, most of my income is spent on my rent. I am one voice, I am one face among thousands that are struggling to survive. I am asking the Rent Guideline Board, have a heart, and vote for rent rollback, and stop the landlords from bleeding us dry. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Jose Rodriguez, Edgar Larias, and Joseph Sepeda. We do need interpreter for Jose Rodriguez. Jose Rodriguez? Not here. Okay, we'll move on to Edgar Larias. Is Edgar Larias here?
Good afternoon, everyone, and good evening. Actually, thank you for coming. You know, this is very important for a lot of families, the elderly, single moms, single-income households, are all going to be affected by this. And I just gauged this by what I see happening to my mother, who's 83. For 45 years, she's lived in the same place. She's been harassed ever since we went out of Mitchell Llama and into rent stabilization. Rent stabilization is not really that stable, as you know, you guys keep increasing it. The landlords get very creative with MCIs, legal fees, and a whole bunch of other burdens that the tenants with. And the fact of the matter is that far too many seniors, okay, are being harassed to such a point where their mental stability is compromised, and that needs to be addressed. I see it every time that my mother gets a letter that she has to appear in court, just because I'm organizing my building and fighting MCIs, this landlord has singled out my family, and I've been in court for the last four years. It's not right. My rent, my rent has increased exponentially, and the other thing, too, is, my mother's rent went from rent-stabilized, or Mitchell Llama, $400 to $1,200 in less, in less than a year and a half. We got hit with eight MCIs, one after the other, and thank God, I was able to organize some of the tenants, because the tenant association is in bet with them, and voting to make electricity something that the tenants have to pay for. And then, the first time that I got an electric bill was $300. There's no way that, in the winter, I should be paying $300 for electricity, especially when the electricity used to be included in the rent. So, they're finding all these ways. Now, they're building two new buildings. We're losing our football area, the playground, the basketball court, he made it a parking lot, and now, we have to deal with three years of noise, and we have to deal with so much animosity every time we go to the office to pay something. And we need actually help. We need a rent rollback. It's been 46 years of non-stop increases, okay? Last year, we were lucky and blessed that you guys listened to the data that we gave you, and you saw that for 46 years, they've been raising the rent, the oil barrels have gone down, okay? They're down to $50, and there's-
Joseph Sepeda, can you wrap it up? I'm sorry, you're over time.
Well, long story short, we need to strengthen the rent laws, and we also need a rollback. We need to save these people. Too many people are becoming homeless, too many people are being thrown out on the streets, too many people are being displaced and gentrified, all because of greed. Greed, and we need to put a cap on it. So, rollback, rollback, we need it.
The next speaker is Vanessa L. Gibson, council member of the New York City Council.
Good evening, thank you so much to everyone. Welcome to the Bronx Museum of the Arts. Good evening to Chairperson Roberts, to distinguished members of the Rent Guidelines Board, and to all of the residents here this evening. Thank you so much for joining us. I am your council member, Vanessa Gibson of the 16th District, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you all this evening. I proudly stand here on behalf of many residents of District 16, who call Claremont, Claremont Village, Concourse, Concourse Village, High Bridge, Morris Heights, and Mount Eden their home. In the past, residents, in the past, many of our residents in the Bronx did not have the opportunity to speak before the Rent Guidelines Board without having to travel to another part of our city. Your presence here as Rent Guidelines Board speaks volumes about your commitment to the people of this borough, and your dedication to encouraging participation and input from residents in this borough, so I thank you for that. I am sure that you can imagine that as you evaluate rent guidelines for the upcoming fiscal year, literally thousands of tenants are looking to all of you for your support, hoping that you once again take steps to address the ever-rising cost of rent across our city. Many constituents here in the Bronx view the important work of RGB as important to our broader housing agenda, and your ongoing work to ensure that all New Yorkers have access and opportunity to quality affordable housing. Your groundbreaking decision to approve a rent freeze last year helped to alleviate the burden of sky-high rents for thousands of New Yorkers. I thank you for that. Now, this year, we are asking you once again to consider the economic pressure that so many New Yorkers face every day, and take your advocacy for rent-stabilized and rent-controlled tenants one step further by issuing a rent rollback. Sorry. Sorry. I'm almost done. Thank you all, thank you, guys. I'm almost done. Rent control- the opportunity to speak before the Rent Guidelines Board without having to travel to another part of our city. Your presence here as Rent Guidelines Board speaks volumes about your commitment to the people of this borough and your dedication to encouraging participation and input from residents in this borough. So I thank you for that. I am sure that you can imagine that as you evaluate rent guidelines for the upcoming fiscal year, literally thousands of tenants are looking to all of you for your support, hoping that you once again take steps to address the ever-rising cost of rent across our city. Many constituents here in the Bronx view the important work of RGB as important to our broader housing agenda and your ongoing work to ensure that all New Yorkers have access and opportunity to quality affordable housing. Your groundbreaking decision to approve a rent freeze last year helped to alleviate the burden of sky-high rents for thousands of New Yorkers. I thank you for that. Now, this year, we are asking you once again to consider the economic pressure that so many New Yorkers face every day and take your advocacy for rent stabilized and rent controlled tenants one step further by issuing a rent rollback. Sorry. I'm almost done. Thank you all. Thank you, guys. I'm almost done. Rent control and rent stabilization are of particular importance to the residents of our borough. A recent report issued by the Association for Neighborhood and Housing Development stated that the top five neighborhoods in our city in the most danger of becoming unaffordable are residents in the West Bronx. That is High Bridge, that is Concourse, that is Morrisania. And according to this report, sixty-seven percent of West Bronx residents are considered rent burdened. And not surprisingly, more were more heavily involved in housing court than anywhere in the city. That's not right. As a council member and also as a tenant myself, I urge you to seriously consider the implications of the increasing unaffordability that we have in the West Bronx, especially given the burden that evictions places on our courts and our shelter systems, not to mention the well-documented negative effects that homelessness and eviction has on our school children. Tonight, I am simply here to advocate for the community that elected me and for all the low-income, fixed-income, disabled New Yorkers that are rent burdened in our community. And I urge you to consider a measure that would stop the spiraling rising cost of rent in its tracks. This will not only serve the immediate needs of thousands of Bronx families that I represent, but it would also reduce market pressures that threaten to undermine our mayor's ambitious plan to preserve and create two hundred thousand units of new affordable housing. That is important. It is imperative that we seize upon this unique opportunity to roll back the rent and allow our tenants the fair opportunity they deserve. I cannot emphasize strongly enough how important my tenants are to the fabric of this community. They have been living here from ten to twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. And very especial for us in the Bronx. Long before developers set eyes on the Bronx, these tenants lived here and thrived through it all, through the devastation, through the burnout, when no one, when no one, when no one looked at the Bronx and gave us a second glance. These residents stood tall, and they remained here. Why? Because it's their home, and they saw what we all see now, the thriving economic opportunity that the Bronx is presenting itself to be. These are the tenants that deserve to live here and stay here in their homes without any pressure to be pushed nor priced out. So I ask you all, as I close, by just reminding you, and I say this all the time, affordable housing, ladies and gentlemen, is not a luxury, but it is simply a right. It is a fundamental right that we are entitled to. And so I truly, truly hope, as you deliberate amongst all of these hearings, that you really listen to the tenants that are coming before you, hear their stories, hear their struggles, hear their concerns that they go through each and every day. When the cameras go away, when the media goes home, they live in conditions that are unacceptable for human beings, and that simply is not right. So I look forward to working with you, the Rent Guidelines Board, on this and many other matters of shared and mutual concern as we continue to fight for what is ours and what is right, and that is affordable and quality housing. Thank you for having me this evening. I look forward to working with all of you, and God bless the Bronx.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Johnny Coburn, Sophia McPherson, and Nestor Marina. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Johnny Coburn. Thank you very much. Good evening. I live in this neighborhood. Matter of fact, I live right down the block here on Gerard Avenue.
Can you move, move the mic closer to you?
I live right down the block on ten-twenty Gerard Avenue and one hundred and sixty-fifth Street. I've been living there for approximately twenty-five years. Okay, I'm sixty-one years old. I'll be sixty-two my next birthday coming up. The thing about it is, what I want to talk to, I'll make it very simple. I want to talk about MCIs, maximum capital increases. They go on your lease, and they don't come off. I don't think that's right at all. After you get through paying for your boiler or your window, which you can't take with you anyhow, you stuck with still continuing to pay? That's ridiculous. That makes no sense. I don't know who made this insane law, but somebody needs to look into it and do something about it. Because I pay for the window, the mount stays on. I pay for the boiler, and it continues to stay on. And after it gets up to two thousand dollars, y'all tell me, get the heck out. Have anything to say about that?
Well, we can tell you that the MCI program is a state program. It's pursuant to state law. It's not something that the Rent Guidelines Board has control over, so your concerns can certainly be addressed to your elected officials in Albany.
I don't live in Albany. I live here. I don't want to talk to no people up there, how they get to decide what I do. Over in Albany, they decide that down here, I need to pay the money for my windows and everything.
Mr. Coburn, your time's up. We need to move on to Sophia McPherson.
Yeah, I want a rent rollback because the thing about it is, after I, listen, wait, hold on. Wait, one more point. If I make, if I don't get the rent rollback, or I get an increase in my rent, I'm paying the MCI plus my rent, plus my increased rent? That hurts.
Okay, it's Ms. McPherson's turn, please. Could you step forward, please?
Hello. My name is Sophia McPherson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. I wanted to make a statement. I need to know my rights. I've been living in twelve-thirty-five Morris Avenue in the Bronx past thirty years. I'm fifty-three years old. My kids grew up in the building. The new landlord took over the building. The building from Jerome Associated, they not the landlord no more. So I went to court to find out information that the corporation is, IROC, had took over the building. I think they, I don't know that, somebody need to help me with this? Um, can you? IROC, IROC, I have a speech problem. IROC took over the building, and they said we pay our rent to these people right here. I've been paying my rent, and I get Section Eight. So the old landlord was getting the money that supposed to go to the new landlord. The new landlord say they didn't get the money, and they billed me for twenty-nine-hundred dollars, two thousand dollars. I only supposed to pay one-seventy-six with the Section Eight. I called the Section Eight, and they said the new IROC posted, call them, give them the information so they can send the money. They didn't even call the people so they can send the money. So I don't know if it's discrimination or what's going on. So I need to know what's, you know, what's my rights and what need to be done. And I did everything. I went to court. I called the Section Eight, told them about the new landlord. They said, send your share of the money there. But we supposed to know, the new landlord supposed to know for the five of us so we can send the money to them. And they claimed they didn't get the money from Section Eight yet. So I need to know what's going on.
Thank you.
A rent rollback.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Yep. Mr. Repsing is going to refer you to someone to try to help you out.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I will sit down and read.